Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There are a few ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit it to the planning staff before the start of the meeting. This is not required for docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone over here to capture comments. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for the applicant's statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for the applicant's Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. For special use docket decisions. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions are considered by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county website. For additional assistance, contact the case planners. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public I will now do roll call. Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
Mr. Limbach? Mr. Watkins, I understand, is absent. Mr. Young?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez is absent, correct? Mr. Martzki?
Present.
Mr. Saunders is also absent. And Ms. Welch. Your chair is present. We have a quorum. Approval of previous month's minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes as submitted to us? Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move that we approve the minutes for the last meeting as mailed.
A second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
I abstain.
Mr. Martzki?
Yeah.
Chair approves. Three to one, the minutes pass. I'm confused with small quorum. Thank you very much. Call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Are there any call to public speakers this evening? I do not have a form in front of me. Hearing none. We will now move to the docket portion of our meeting. I would like to propose that we change the order of the agenda, moving agenda item number five to number one. We have had a request from the applicant to delay to table this item until December.
Which item, ma'am?
SU 23-26, special use modification to build a 235-megawatt solar field, Apco and Roadrunner LLC.
Okay, and the request was to postpone it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I would like to entertain a motion to table that.
Madam Chair, I move we table item SU 23-26 through December.
Say aye.
Second. Thank you. We will now take a roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to postpone.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is postponed. So I don't know if you folks would like to leave or stick around?
Do they have a date in December?
Ms. McLaughlin, what is that date in December?
It is December 13th, same place, 4:00 PM. Yes.
Same time?
Same time, yeah. Notification, no, we will not. We will put it on the county website. And if there are any questions, feel free to contact me if you have any additional comments or questions. My contact information was in the letter, and it's also on the website. The 13th, that, the 13th, that's a Wednesday. Second Wednesday.
Thank you for your patience.
Sounds good.
Moving on. Item RZ 23-18, Becky Lane. Applicants request a rezoning from R36 to GB, to general business, 38.7 acres. Is the applicant present, Mr. Lind? Thank you. Call for the planning director, or, I'm sorry, Planning Director's report. Mr. Taylor?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 23-18. The applicant is Jacob Lindy. The request is rezoned from residential district to general business district. The property is located within growth area B and has a plan designation of developing. Existing use of the property, there isn't any existing use of the property, it is undeveloped. The proposed use is for commercial. Requested zoning district is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation and the growth area category. Subject property is located approximately 26 miles east of this location. The property is located at the, at Becky Lane and State Route 80, approximately a quarter mile north of State Route 80. It encompasses two parcels, parcel 40812-004C and 004D. The property does consist of 38.7 acres. The applicant notified nearby property owners on August 5th, as required by the county zoning regulations. Staff mailed notices and published legal notice in the Sierra Vista Herald Review on October 18th and posted the property on October 10th. Staff has not received any public input for this docket item. So the subject property is undeveloped, as mentioned earlier. Surrounded uses include undeveloped lands to the east and west, commercial uses to the south, and undeveloped lands as well as single-family residences to the north. These are views of Becky Lane viewing north and south. At the time of development, this road will need to be improved with chip seal. This is a view of the commercial uses to the south which are established. On the left of the screen would be an impound yard, to the right of the screen would be a metal fabrication shop. This is a site map provided by the applicant showing the parcels in relation to those commercial properties to the south and the undeveloped residential zone property to the west. The zoning regulations identify 15 factors to evaluate the appropriateness of a zoning Factors in favor of the zoning amendment, our adjacent properties can continue to develop. Adequate property access, given Becky Lane is there. Compatible infill project. The applicant has completed the citizen review process, and the request is consistent with county planning policies. Factors not in favor of the rezoning would be a land use plan has not been provided, as the request is speculative, and the property does abut residentially zoned properties which are located to the north. Factors in favor of approval complies with 10 applicable rezoning factors used to analyze zoning amendments, allows uses generally compatible with the existing development pattern, located in the vicinity of State Route 80, Plantation Road, and Becky Lane. Factors against approval, again, the future land uses are undetermined at this time. Land use, a land use plan has not been provided. GB land uses may be incompatible with adjacent residentially zoned properties to the north, which at this time are not, are not developed. Three rezoning factors do not apply to this rezon. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's initial presentation for docket 23-18. We are available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. It is time for the applicant's statement. Would you come forward, Mr. Lind? You have 10 minutes, sir. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Lindy. I'm here today with my wife, Holly, and two of our children. Our current address is 2000 Chateau Lane in Sierra Vista, 85635. My wife and I have been residents of Cochise County for on and off for 30 years. We purchased these parcels about 13 years ago. Our initial plan for them was to potentially have a house there at some point. However, over the years, we've noticed that a lot of commercial development has taken place, most recently is a vehicle storage impound yard there with what looks to be 100 or more vehicles just to the south there. We felt that residential would no longer be in our interest and probably not in anyone else's interest as well due to the general business that's going on to the south and to the west. In addition, the announcement of the new Douglas Commercial Port of Entry had us thinking that this property would be better zoned as general business to serve via commercial port of entry. This property is in between the existing Douglas Port of Entry and the proposed commercial port of entry. It's also in between Highway 191 and James Ranch Road, which is the proposed site for the new commercial port of entry. Being that it's just 900 feet north of Highway 80, we feel this would be a great, a great place for general business to support the developing needs of that new commercial port of entry when it comes. So we're requesting to rezon from R36 to general business to match the existing zoning that's to the south, as was mentioned, and to the west. It's also to provide developmental land for future commercial activities and convenience of the public with respect to those POEs. It's likely to provide wholesale or other distribution activities, and these lots do offer plenty of space for off-street parking as well. As residents of Cochise County, we plan on being good neighbors, abiding by any requirements, restrictions that may be in place, and any permitting process, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The public hearing on this matter is now open. I do not have any forms filled out. Did anyone want to speak to this matter? Hearing none. It is time for the applicant's rebuttal. Did you miss anything, Mr. Lindy, or are we good? Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. It's time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Do not.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else?
How close is the closest residence to this parcel?
Mr. Young?
Yes, how close is the closest residence to this parcel, north of this parcel?
Who can answer that easily?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the nearest residence would be located to the northwest. It's well in excess of 100 feet, it's closer to 300 feet.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Young?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I now call for the Planning Director's summary and recommendation, Mr. Taylor.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff recommends approval of docket RZ 23-18 with one condition, which was discussed with the applicant, and the applicant has agreed to this condition. At the time of development, a 20-foot landscape buffer is required along the north property line of APN 40812-004C, as currently configured, if a residential use is established on an abutting property immediately to the north.
I call for the motion, please. I'm sorry, I was thinking about that, that statement. So if there is no existing residential use to the north, you will not be required to create that landscape buffer?
Madam Chair, the majority of our 36 parcels in that immediate area have not developed. The applicant understands the concerns that we have, that if, is it a residential use at the time this property develops, we would ask for that landscape buffer?
Yes, okay, so it's contingent. Thank you very much. I now call for the motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of docket RZ 23-18, rezoning parcel 408-12-4C and 40812-4 Delta from RU 36 to general business. Staff recommendation of a condition and factors of approval constitute the findings effect.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for the question. Mr. Montgomery?
Question, ma'am?
Yes, I'm sorry, call for the vote on this matter, yes?
Yes, I will vote to approve the applicant.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion passes. Congratulations. This item is for, it will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend that Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you very much. We now move to docket RZ 23-19, labeled Rancho Del Sol. This applicant requests a rezoning from R36 to RU4. It is five acres. I understand Mr. Urick is not present, is that correct?
I do not believe he's present.
Mr. Urick, are you online by any chance? I would like to suggest that we move forward with this item, since it is a down zoning, these are typically smooth proceeding. Is there any objections to proceeding without the applicant present?
No.
Ms. McLaughlin, your report, please.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an applicant-initiated rezoning request. The applicant is Justin Urick. The current zoning is R36 residential, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is RU4 rule, one dwelling per four acres. The current land use category is D rule, there is no area plan. There is an RV on site for residential purposes. This is not a permitted use because there is not an established principal use. The applicant wishes to construct a tiny home on site. Tiny homes are permitted within RU4 zoning. Here is the location. It's a little east of Highway 191 near the checkpoint. The parcel number is 40137227A. It is five acres in size. Here is the general location. It's within the former Sunsites Ranches 4 subdivision, which was originally planted in 1968. All parcels within that subdivision are 2.5 acres in size. You can see the subject parcel is a double lot. Access within the subdivision is a little difficult. The roads are dirt, they're private roads, and very few parcels have been developed to date. Here is the zoning. The Sunsite subdivision was zoned R36. It is approximately 325 feet from the nearest rural zone parcel, which is directly to the west. Here is drone shots of the site on the left. On the top right is Rancho Del Sol, which is the access road to the site, and on the bottom right, you can see the RV. In terms of factors in favor of approval, the proposed zoning of RU4 rule, one dwelling per four acres would bring the zoning into compliance with the existing land use, which is D rule. Their proposed RU4 zoning is more appropriate than the existing R36, given the condition and extent of existing utilities and infrastructure. Their request complies with all applicable rezoning factors used to analyze rezoning requests. And in terms of factors not in favor, we did receive one anonymous letter of opposition, and just yesterday, I did get another letter of opposition, which was not attached. And also, this request is not directly contiguous to RU4 zoning, although the applicant proposes a residential use, rural zoning is less restrictive in terms of permitted uses than residential zoning. I will now pause for commission discussion. Again, the applicant is not present, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none. I move to commission discussion. Do we have any questions?
My only question is, for staff, what do you consider very near?
In terms of the closest zoning district?
Yes, very near, but not directly contiguous to RU4.
In this case, 325 feet.
Okay.
One parcel.
Thank you.
Mr. Martzki? Mr. Limbach?
No.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
No.
I do have one. Ms. McLaughlin, have they applied for their RV permit?
What they would like to do is to construct their own home on site, a tiny home, and in order to get a temporary use permit, they need to have an active building permit. So they're hoping to, that this rezoning goes through so that they can then pull a building permit and then a temporary use permit. So that is the intent, to follow the regulations and the permitting process.
And how much time are we giving them to accomplish whichever direction they go in?
Until this meeting and then the Board of Supervisors' meeting.
All right, and then they will apply for appropriate permit?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Mr. Limbach?
What was the nature of the objections?
Just that it was residential property, and they felt it should remain that way, essentially.
Ms. McLaughlin, you have your summary?
Yes. This item has been noticed to be heard by the Board of Supervisors on November 28th. Staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation. I have included a sample motion for consideration of the commission, and again, I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call for the motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the rezoning docket RZ 23-19, Rancho Del Sol, located on parcel 401-37-227A, from R36 to RU4. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Thank you. Do I have second? Mr. Martzki, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Aye.
We will then take the vote. Mr. Montgomery?
I vote aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This motion does pass. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. And I thank you very much. Item number three, Eastland Road, RZ 23-20. The applicant requests a rezoning from SR22 to RU4. It is 4.5 acres. The applicant's name is Phyllis Peachey. Are you present? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taylor, could you please make your report?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket RZ 23-20. Property is located on Eastland Road. The applicant, as stated, is Phyllis Peachey. Current zoning is single household residential. Proposed zoning is rural. Growth area is located, it is growth area D, which is a rural area. Plan designation is also rural. Property is located in the mid-Sulfur Springs Valley area plan. The property is undeveloped, with the exception of a couple of accessory structures. The proposed use is eventually a single-family residence. Requested zoning district is consistent with the rural comprehensive plan designation, the D growth area category, as well as the mid-Sulfur Springs Valley area plan, low-density residential designation. Subject property is located within the Sunsize Development, approximately 60 miles north of our location. Again, the property is located at the southeast corner of Eastland and Central Roads and Sunsites. The property is 4.5 acres. The parcel number 11606032A is a combination parcel number, also known, parcels are also known as 11606028, 029, 03, 0031, and 032. The applicant did propose to combine those lots in order to meet the minimum parcel size for the RU4 zoning district. The applicant did not have to notify adjacent property owners, as this request is a downzone. Staff mailed notices and published legal notice in the Sierra Vista Herald Review on October 18th and posted the property on October 19th. Staff has not received public input for this docket item. There are two small accessory structures on the property. Surrounding uses include agriculture to the north and east, single-family residential, very low-density, single-family residential uses to the west and to the south. This is an image showing Eastland Road viewing west, as well as Central Road viewing south from the property. This is Victory Street, which is the applicant is currently using as an access street with the properties to the east and the properties to the east, which are also, which are undeveloped. The applicant did provide a site plan which demonstrates the location of those accessory structures on the property. The zoning regulations identify 15 factors to evaluate the appropriateness of zoning Factors in favor include, the request is a downzone that reduces the allowed number, allowed residential density of the property. Adjacent districts can still develop as zoned. The proposal is compatible with existing development pattern in the area, and the development, again, complies with the mid-Sulfur Springs Valley area plan. Factors not in favor, none identified. So to summarize, the factors in favor of approval of the rezoning amendment, of the zoning amendment would be complies with eight applicable rezoning factors used to analyze zoning amendments, and allows uses that are compatible with the existing development pattern. Factors against approval, none are identified. Seven rezoning factors do not apply to this downzone. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes this portion of the staff presentation for docket RZ 23-20. We are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. It is time for the applicant's statement, Ms. Peachey. Would you like to make a statement? Okay. Would you like to come forward and tell us about your plans? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Virginia Powell. I am currently residing with my mom at 383 North Shadow Mountain Court in Pierce, Sunsite area. I moved from Pennsylvania after my mom had purchased this plot of land with my future living there, in hopes of that. So I am, property is three miles from her home. I'm here to help take care of her with her, any upcoming medical issues. I'm here to be a part of the community. I've met my neighbors, two out of the three, in person, and I do, I, I'm a nurse, looking forward to being part of Cochise County and being a positive neighbor over there. I don't seem to have any problems with anybody so far. They're also rural, so I'm looking forward to taking advantage of the opt-out, which I haven't decided exactly what I'm doing yet. There's so many options, and so, you know, I have time to do it. So at this point, my, my current plan is just to do a tiny shed to home conversion at this point, and then possibly add one. So it's just me and my animals, I don't need much.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is a time for comments from other persons. You don't have any forms. Is there anyone in the room that wants to speak to this matter? Hearing none. Call for the applicant's rebuttal. I'm assuming there's no need. Public hearing is closed. It is time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for the applicant or our staff?
Only a brief comment. I see there are... Only a brief comment. I see there are factors against approval, and there are none identified. It might be the first time I've ever seen that. So it's compelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Taylor, a summary, please?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the request is a downzone. It will reduce the allowed residential density in the area, which is fairly consistent with what's on the ground now. It's very limited development in that area. The proposal would not allow a use that is not compatible with the existing development pattern, which is very sparsely populated with single-family residences and agriculture. For that reason, staff recommends approval without conditions of docket RZ 23-20.
Thank you very much. A call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lindbach?
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors docket RZ 23-20, rezoning parcel 116-06-0328, previously described as parcels 116-06-028 through 116-06-032, from SR22 to RU4, with factors of approval constituting findings of fact.
Thank you. Second, please.
I will second today.
Mr. Montgomery, thank you. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Hearing none. I now call for the vote. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Lindbach?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This motion does pass. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you, ladies. We now move to docket SU 23-25. The applicant requests a special use modification to operate a music pavilion. The applicant is Bisbee Ventures, Mr. Joseph Lewis, representing. Are you present, sir? Thank you very much. I now call for the planning director's report, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 23-25. The request is for a music pavilion with ballroom, kitchen, and bar facilities. The applicant is Joseph Lewis. The current zoning is residential district with a 36,000 square foot minimum parcel size. The growth area is in the C, which is rural community. The area plan is the Naco area plan. The land use designation is a combination of business and recreational open space for this parcel. Previous uses include a golf course restaurant with RV park. The proposed use is for a music pavilion with ballroom, kitchen, and bar. So the subject parcel is located approximately 5.5 miles south of our current location. The property is located at 1794 Newell Street, APN 10255002. The property totals approximately 95 acres. The applicant notified adjacent property owners on September 14th, 2023, as required by the county zoning regulations. Staff mailed notices and published legal notice in the Sierra Vista Herald Review on October 18th, 2023, and staff posted the property on October 10th, 2023. Staff has received significant public input for this docket, both in support and opposition. Surrounding land uses include recreational vehicle, single-family residential, and undeveloped uses to the south, undeveloped lands to the north, as well as single-family residential to the east and west. These two images show the alignment of Newell Street, the one on the left showing the approximate location of the proposed parking area, the other property viewing west showing the proposed location of the amphitheater area, which would be slightly above and to the right of the structure in the image. Some additional photographs showing the existing buildings on the property, again, looking along the Newell Street alignment. And some additional drone images showing southwest from the property, as well as viewing south from the property, showing that the majority of residential development is to the southwest. The majority, there is development to the south, but it, as you head eastward in that direction, the development kind of thins out a little bit, and you see more vacant, undeveloped parcels. The applicant has provided a concept plan showing the location of the proposed amphitheater structure, highlighting the existing building, which will be adaptively reused, again, as a ballroom slash kitchen and bar facility, as well as a 450-space parking area. So this image zooms in a little bit on the project area, again, showing the proposed location of the amphitheater in relation to the existing structure and the new parking area. A right-of-way permit will be required to punch through that new access point into that new parking area, as shown on the project plan. Additionally, the engineering and national resources department will require traffic impact analysis at the permitting stage to identify any onsite and potential offsite improvements. Lastly, a project area overlay showing the image in terms of the existing vegetation on the property and location to the street. So the applicant, with the application, has provided a rendering of the amphitheater showing its depression and location, depression topographically, in relation to the existing structure with the mountains in the back. Zoning regulations identify 10 factors to evaluate the appropriateness of special use authorizations. Factors in favor include: Applicant has completed the citizen review process. There are a limited number of curb cuts, one existing and one new, onto an improved roadway surface. Access to the site is from a minor collector via a major collector, Wilson Road, as well as a major commercial road, Naco Highway. Services are in place or are available. Site development and building code requirements apply. The applicant has not requested any waivers. Factors not in favor: The request is not fully compliant with the adopted Naco area plan or zoning district purpose. The plan designations at the time were implemented because of the existing former use, which was obviously the golf course. So the designation for open space was with the golf course in mind, as it was established use at the time. Additionally, the zoning district largely promotes residential land use. It does allow a few non-residential land uses, such as churches, indoor or outdoor recreational vehicle facilities, as well as emergency vehicle barns or stations. Obviously, the biggest concern with a site or a use like this, an adaptive reuse of a site like this, would be the offsite impacts on surrounding residential development, which would be largely noise, lighting, and traffic, with noise and traffic being the most commonly stated reasons in opposition. So again, staff noticed the property. The applicant sent out a letter on the 14th of September. County notified, posted the property on October 10th. Notices were mailed, and the legal ad was published on October 18th. As of today, the public hearing, staff has received six notices, excuse me, six responses in favor and seven in opposition. Staff also received a petition with 33 signatures, representing multiple cities, including Naco, Bisbee, Douglas, and Sierra Vista.
Excuse me? Could you just say the last thing you just said?
Sure. Staff also received a petition with 33 signatures. The addresses on that petition represented residency in multiple towns and cities, including Naco, Bisbee, Douglas, and Sierra Vista.
Was that in opposition?
The petition was in support.
In support. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, this concludes staff's presentation for docket SU 23-25. To pause for the applicant's presentation and commission discussion, but we are available for your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, would you like to come forward? You have 10 minutes to speak, sir. State your name and address before you begin.
My name is Joseph Lewis. My residence, 67 Main, Bisbee. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, for giving me the opportunity to present this project to you today. First, I'd like to briefly go over, recap the relatively recent history of the former Turquoise Valley Golf Course. I purchased the property in September of 2018, after several ownership groups had tried their best to keep the course viable, and unfortunately could not find a path to success. I kept the course open for a year as I worked on a master plan for the property, which would have included nine-hole course. Unfortunately, this plan was firmly rejected at a neighborhood meeting in April of 2019. One of the reasons why I kept the course open and put considerable monies back into it is because once the course is closed and goes fallow, it's almost impossible to bring it back to life. I could no longer absorb the ongoing operating losses and close the course in June of that same year, 2019. Here we are, five years later, and I believe my team and I have come up with a plan that will have a positive impact on the Naco community and Cochise County as a whole. Here are a few bullet points in support of the proposed music pavilion use permit being discussed Neighborhood impact, we have agreed to all Cochise County recommended stipulations, including times, which were different than what we originally proposed, more limitations on that. I believe strongly that there'll be a significant economic impact in that the music pavilion will draw people throughout the county and hopefully throughout the state, which will have an impact on increased property taxes, allocated sales taxes, revenue, and construction taxes. Employment, we expect that once completed, the music venue and restaurant bar to acquire a minimum of 10 full-time employees and five part-time employees. View, the reason I ask that the rendering you put up is that, you know, Naco has, in my mind, in my opinion anyway, some amazing views of the Mule Mountains that I don't think a lot of people know of. And it's, to me, it's a gorgeous sight that I would love the opportunity for more people to be able to experience and enjoy those views. Visitors, the music pavilion has a unique opportunity to draw tourists to Naco who might not otherwise come. Naco is a border town, and unfortunately, there are those that unfairly give it a bad rap accordingly. I believe in today's sometimes divisive world. Live music brings people together through emotional and social connections. It fosters the shared experience it creates and the sense of belonging and community it provides. It has a unique ability to transcend cultural, social, and personal differences, uniting people through the universal language of music. Naco is, in my opinion, is the perfect place to foster this special language. I know that there are some in Naco who might not support repurposing the old TBGC course in this manner, and have concerns over potential traffic and sound. We will continue to work with staff and the community to mitigate potential issues as they arise. My hope is that by being involved in the community and listening to both those that are for the music pavilion project and those that may have reservations, we can be a good neighbor. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, sir. This is the time we ask for public comment on this matter. I have three forums. First to come forward, please, Emily Vardaman. State your name and address before speaking, ma'am. You have five minutes.
I'm Emily Vardaman. I live at 3711 South Rogers, about one block from the proposed venue. I moved to Bisbee from Tucson 50 years ago, and left the busyness of Bisbee almost 18 years ago for the quiet peacefulness of Naco. To me, this would ruin the quiet peaceful life I have loved there for nearly 18 years. Traffic, noise, strangers coming in from, as Joe said, out of state, around the state, maybe even further. I don't think that's a good thing for our little town. Also, we already have a music venue in the area, and we just had a wonderful mariachi concert there over the weekend with hundreds of people, many vendors. The concert's been ongoing now for years. There's been other large concerts. We have a wonderful venue. We don't need to add one to the quiet peaceful town of Naco. And I would just suggest, if Joe really wants to do anything for the community, he should perhaps finish the construction of the apartments in old Bisbee.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Christopher Willhoyt. Is that correct?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
My name's Christopher Willhoyt, and I live at 3619 South Towner Avenue in Naco. My property actually abuts Mr. Lewis's property. We're touching. And I am in support of the amphitheater for a lot of reasons. The colonia that is Naco Pueblo has very limited options in it. I have two small children. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have city parks. We don't have a whole lot of businesses. And we need some kind of economic anchor to tie it all in together, draw in more business. Yeah, that would increase traffic and some of the noise. Living in Naco, I could tell you a majority of the noise comes from a place where we can't complain. That music is incredibly loud. Our music would not, that music there would not rival it, I don't believe. It'll be, well, like any live music in Bisbee. But it'll also include the opportunity for people like me who own property to raise our kids and give them something in the future to do something with. It's really important that Naco grows and does more for people like me, who, I own property all over the county, but I live in Naco, for all the reasons that she said, and for the opportunities that could arise. Naco could be a very incredible place if there were investors and people who actually wanted to do something with it. And yeah, I guess that's what I have to say. But I fully promote the amphitheater, and I believe it'd be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Willhoyt. Thank you. Janelle McCrery. You'll tell me if that's wrong. All right, thank you, ma'am. You're at it.
I'm Janelle McCrery. I live at 3605 South Towner, right next to Chris. Unlike Chris, I oppose the music venue. Like Emily, we love quiet Naco. Joseph Lewis has done nothing to support Naco. He closed the golf course, the bar and restaurant, and the venue for large gatherings. In the four years that it has not been a golf course, he's done virtually nothing but allow it to be a weed patch, which is a fire hazard. I oppose it for the noise, for the traffic, a parking lot for 450 cars. They have to arrive in Naco via Naco Highway or Wilson Road. The impact on the community would be horrendous. There would be a lot of people, a lot of trash, and can you imagine the traffic leaving after a concert from a parking lot that holds 450 cars? The congestion, the noise, the headlights. And I personally, living where I do, am concerned about added fire hazard with the prospect of a stoned or drunk participant flipping a lit cigarette into the weed patch. Please keep Naco quiet and do not approve this.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the room that failed to fill out a form that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am? Come forward. Then we need you to fill out a form after the fact, please. Just state your name and address for the audio.
Hi, I'm Sarah Olaf. I also live at 3711 Rogers with Emily. I have been in Bisbee for 17 years, and since Joseph Lewis has come, he's not only done things like this in the high school, but also owns a lot of properties that he has, Airbnbs. I'm facing homelessness right now. I don't know that you really need that much more money. You know, it seems very greedy of you. I know you're like, oh, we can bring people in to see the beautiful mountains. Well, yeah, sounds more like greed. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to fill out a form, please. There is five minutes allotted for applicant's rebuttal. Mr. Lewis?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Hold on. Who's online, please?
Oh, hello. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble navigating this thing to try and get my piece in.
And you are?
My name is James Terry, and I live at 2125 West Zapata. And that is at the corner of Wilson and Zapata. That is the northwest corner of Naco. That is where the majority of the traffic will come in. That is a single-lane road. That is a single-lane road. And this, not on the agenda tonight, but I think that if they do decide to put this through, they better think about how they're going to design that road and what they're going to do. Most people, there is purdy lane there that comes through there that people could cut through, and it's dusty. It makes dust that hangs up in the air for hours and days, really, if people cut through there. But that's the only ways in, and the majority of the people will be coming from the west to go to these concerts. And Mr. Lewis, listen, I feel sorry for him as a businessman. We all make bad decisions. Why didn't he think about this four years ago and not shut it up and just say, oh, well, we're not going to play golf anymore. We're going to just make it into a venue for parties. Why didn't he think about it then? And he's in trouble now, and he's putting it all down our throat. I don't need a line of cars out my door. That's why I moved here for the golf course. I've worked in golf all my life. I found a place where I wanted to live and play golf, and he crushed my dreams. And now he's turning it around and shoving it up the other side with a rock and roll venue. Why doesn't he make a bird sanctuary or an archery, something that's quiet? We don't need it down here. There are a lot of people that moved here retired to play golf because it's their hobby and it's their own enjoyment in life, like everyone has their own. It might be hunting. It might be making puzzles. But this Joseph Lewis has done nothing down here but make a mess and a fire hazard. And I don't know about his shenanigans up in there in Bisbee, but I've heard people have died on his building sites. We don't need it down here. Thank you for your time, commissioners and lady chair.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, you do have, potentially you have speaker online, Annie Reeves. Somebody just like you online.
You'll get it. You'll get your turn.
We'll get there. Name and address, please, ma'am, before you speak.
My name is Renee Reed, and I live at 2071 West Zapata in Naco. I'm concerned about the noise, the traffic, and Mr. Lewis. Right now, we get music from across the line from Sonora, and with his venue going, the two would be at odds, and we'd be right in the middle of it. I live a half a mile from the border, and I hear the music almost every weekend, especially during Fiesta weekends. And it's very loud, and I don't need another music venue. The traffic is very scary, too, also because the major roads going in there are Naco Highway, Wilson Road, and then Newell, and they're all very small. But with the addition of Camp Naco, this is going to be addressed one way or the other because that's also going to bring traffic. So I hope there's a really good plan in place for that. Another thing is, Mr. Lewis has yet to complete any of his undertakings except for maybe the social club. And, but that's, I'm not sure about that. But his track record of constantly changing his plans is, really bothers me. It is my personal opinion that he takes on more than he is capable of, and therefore I think that should be considered in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Reeves, we'll get to you in just a moment. We have a gentleman in the room that's going to speak. You'll be sure and fill out a form after the fact? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brett Austin. I live at 3443 South Desert Drive, which is just across Green Bush Draw to the east of the golf course. I would like to point out a couple of things. I think, number one, this is not a referendum on Mr. Lewis. This is about a project that he's working on, right? So, and it's not the, it's not the Old Bisbee property. This is Naco property. So these two things are not the same. I live close enough to the border that I hear all the music, too, from Naco, right? And sometimes it's annoying. Sometimes it's enjoyable, but we don't get any say about it, right? So some of the things that I like about this project is that, number one, it's not going to be music constantly. We're not going to have 450 cars in Naco every day, right? If you look at the music venues where we have Mariachi Festival, things like that, Busy Blues Festival, that's like twice a year at the ballpark in Warren, right? Now, I have personally, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I've personally participated in putting on two of the Blues Fest, numbers three and four. I was one of the individuals who brought it to the Warren Ballpark. Also put on festivals, the Lowell Americana Festival, if anybody remembers that from a few years ago. Those are big undertakings. They're hard to do. There's no great spot to do those, right? When you do something at Warren Ballpark, you have to deal with the busy school district. They charge you a lot of money. Not that I would imagine that any organization could come in and just use this facility for free, but it does give a purpose-built music pavilion. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, it does give us a purpose-built music pavilion that we don't have. So I'm in favor of it. I know some of my neighbors immediately next to me are in favor of it as well. And I do want to say something good about Joseph Lewis because I've heard so much bad about him today in this room, that as a member of the American Legion, I contacted Mr. Lewis to ask him if he was using his flagpole at the golf course, and he donated it to the American Legion. So there's a nice story about Mr. Lewis. He's helped us out at the American Legion, and I'm in favor of this project. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Annie Reeves, online? Ms. Reeves?
Ms. Reeves, if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself.
Does she still show connected? Ms. Reeves, unmute your computer, please. Well, we're going to have to move forward. Mr. Lewis, one last chance.
Just a clarification on the parking. We had to design in a maximum for an event that maybe happens twice a year. On a given Saturday afternoon, I foresee maybe 100 people out there at the most enjoying a blues band or a guitar singer or, you know, sitting in a grassy area having a hamburger. To redo the, to put money back into the ballroom, the restaurant bar, to bring it up to code requires a huge investment, and to get a bank to finance that requires a different concept and requires that we have some kind of draw. So that the music pavilion was meant to be that draw. Again, I can just repeat that. I promise to do everything in my power, if this does move forward, to be a good neighbor, and we will do a better job regardless, either way of cutting down the weeds. I can promise you that, too, because the last thing we want is to be a bad neighbor regardless. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Does anyone have a question for the applicant or staff?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lindbarg.
I do have a question. I found within our documents, I found no discussion of security within your proposal, and given the dramatic increase in border-related crime, I believe this is an important consideration. What is your plan for security for the venue and parking lot? Have you consulted with the Bisbee Police Department or the Cochise County Sheriff's? Would you hire armed?
We can't hear anything. Hello?
The mic was muted, so I apologize.
Why?
Okay, do you want me to repeat the answer or?
Yes, please.
Okay. The question was regarding security and what we plan on doing, and I was stating that it's too early in the process to actually come up with a security plan. But when we submitted for permits, we would work on a security plan and get that approved as well, which would arise after sitting down with Cochise County Sheriff's Department and City of Bisbee Police, which I assume on larger events, just like the Blues Fest and the Americana Fest.
But they're in Naco. They're in Naco.
He's not on the board.
Sir, we need you not to speak out.
Thank you.
Having a public meeting and others are speaking at this time.
If I answered the commission's question?
I think you have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, well, I have more. Do you want to?
Do you want to hang out, Mr. Lewis?
Sure. I'm sorry. I'll take my turn.
Sorry.
How will you keep attendees and staff from wandering onto private properties, most specifically along the southwest of the pavilion and clubhouse area?
Well, we do, we do have fencing, but, you know, people that go to a venue, I mean, we are pretty far from, like, they'd wander, they'd wander from, it's about, what, about 300 yards or so to the nearest neighbors to the, to the west. The RV park is directly across the street, and RV park, although the owner's not here, is in support of the project because obviously it's.
No, he hasn't.
Is that, so there is, the property is fenced, and this, the clubhouse is in the center of a very large property of 95 acres. If you count the back half, it's about 185 acres. And we're only talking about a couple of acres of area.
So someone would have to breach the fence or jump the fence?
Yeah, they'd have to walk a long way, I guess is my point. They'd have to walk a long way. And now the problem, I don't think it's going to be the concertgoers, but the problem now is, and will probably continue to be unfortunately, is illegal border crossings, which we all know is a, is a huge issue, and I think they're the ones that, you know, more neighbors have problems with. Yeah, I just don't foresee a concert going wandering a quarter of a mile to a neighbor's property. I mean, I could be wrong. I'm trying to guess the future, but I don't see that as a major issue. But we'd make a bigger fence if we need to, you know, hire, that's what the neighbors want. We'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
I would like to make it clear that the time for public comment is finished, both online and in the room. That time is over. I'm sorry, ma'am. Mr. Montgomery.
Okay, thank you. Had a similar question, too, concerning security. I see this calls for a 15-foot landscaping buffer, but I think that's just a horizontal measurement, right? And you did mention fencing. Is there fencing now or a plan for fencing?
There's currently a perimeter fence about five feet or so. Again, we could put, if the staff recommended it, we could put a taller fence. We have no objection to that.
Okay. I'm thinking of my youth as a high schooler where virtually no fence could keep me and my buddies out if we wanted to get in. There is, maybe my question is as much a commentary. This is an interesting proposal, and I can think of a lot of places where that would be useful. I just don't happen to think that Naco and that location is one of them. I'm familiar with the town, and I did live there briefly in the 80s, and it is a quiet place. One of the things this commission is assigned to do is protect certain aspects of living in Cochise County, such as noise, lighting, dirt, dust, another thing, water, perhaps. I cannot, I don't quite understand how this kind of music venue in Naco, Arizona, would be acceptable to the residents there at large. I see several folks here, not all of them have spoken today, but I wonder what their opinion is. I am compelled, under the rules of this commission and my own observations, to try to protect the oral sovereignty of the neighborhood, protect their quietness, which is why they live there. And I do appreciate that. Noise and traffic will be something to contend with. A golf course does not make a lot of noise, but a music venue, of course, does. And there'd be lighting with that, I'm sure, at night. So I'm having a little issue trying to see this fit in right here.
I understand your opinion. Is there a question there or I?
Not really.
Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted me to sit down or answer any more questions in the commission.
Where I live, we also have other cowboy events, you know? At night, there's floodlights, and you can hear everybody having a great time, and it's within a mile, and it is. I see several folks here, not all of them have spoken today, but I wonder what their opinion is. I am compelled, under the rules of this commission and my own observations, to try to protect the oral sovereignty of the neighborhood, protect their quietness, which is why they live there. And I do appreciate that. Noise and traffic will be something to contend with. A golf course does not make a lot of noise, but a music venue, of course, does. And there'd be lighting with that, I'm sure, at night. So, I'm having a little issue trying to see this fit in right here.
I understand your opinion. I don't, is there a question there, or I?
Not really.
Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted me to sit down, or, or answer any more questions for the commission.
Where I live, we also have other cowboy events, you know? At night, there's floodlights, and you can hear everybody having a great time. And it's within a mile, and it is significantly noisy, but in a happy way.
Well, I'm not gonna, obviously, you have your opinion, but I would also say that it was an inside use, but the ballroom back in the day was used quite a bit for events. And speaking to your question, I don't think any neighbor had a problem with somebody having an event in the ballroom and then wandering over to an adjacent property. So, it's not as if entertainment uses haven't been on the property. What we're really talking about is an outside entertainment use versus an inside.
Although, a ballroom is a contained area, as opposed to
I'm agreeing with you, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Hang out, Mr. Lewis, please. Don't go too far. Mr. Maratsky, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
Yes, what are the proposed hours of operation? I know even me and Douglas, I have two and a half miles from the border, and I can hear that music going till four in the morning. What are your proposed hours?
Madam Chair, Commissioner's staff has included a stipulation, which the applicant has agreed to, which would limit hours with no music events past 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, past midnight Friday and Saturday, and past 8:00 PM on Sunday.
Appreciate it. Just to add for the foreseeable future, we only see music really on Friday and Saturday and Sunday afternoon. Nothing, nothing during the week.
Thank you. I, I have a question. Something you said, Mr. Lewis, at the beginning, that you tried to reopen nine holes, and you were suddenly rejected? What, what was that about?
So, when I bought the course, again, I was fifth owner in five years, because some of the other owners had gone bankrupt for, it, it's, it's very difficult to keep a golf course open in today's without some kind of significant investment in something to subsidize the golf course. So, I came up with a master plan that would have kept the back nine holes and developed the front nine holes into an RV park, wedding pavilion, et cetera. And the, the opinion of a lot of people that had golfed there for a long period of time and all that, was that that really wasn't acceptable, and that I just got, I just got a huge, a huge amount of negative feedback. So, I just, I just felt that I wasn't worth continuing with that.
So, there was a little more to it than just
Yeah, there was, there was a little more to it. And again, I owned it, I came, I worked on a year, for a year on that plan with the neighborhood meeting bef, I didn't just buy it and close it, I guess is my point. I actually spent more to try to keep the golf course open than I did buying the property itself. I mean,
Yeah.
It is what it is.
So, so my last thought is half question, half thought. It doesn't sound like you're going to have really big events. You're building out 450 spaces of parking for a couple times a year, perhaps. Are you going to be able to thrive with small happenings? Can you reduce the hours in the evenings, say, to eight o'clock instead of 10 during the week? And could you change your use request so that you apply for a temporary use permit, which is provided for in our code for concerts? Everything else being very small and neighborly?
The problem with a temporary use permit is you're only allowed to do, I think it's two or three a year. So, you couldn't, it wouldn't work on an ongoing basis.
So, if you had four, that would be a deal killer?
Well, it's, it's, the idea is, again, that people will be sitting on the lawn, having a hamburger,
Yeah.
Listening to, I mean, if anybody ever, like, went to City Park when the Blues Fest first started, that's the kind of environment, where there might be some food vendors out there. You know, it's enjoying the view, listening to music. But especially
So, that's a little too restrictive.
Wouldn't work.
Okay. So, that, that was too, too restrictive, and I, I thank you for addressing that. I think I'm finished with you, sir. Mr. Taylor, I am troubled by this 33 signature petition that the commission has not seen. Is there some way we can throw it up on the screen, or?
We do have hard copies available, and
Can we take the time to?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Pass that around? Thank you very much. Everyone, take a breath, please.
Do I understand that those signatures were largely from other areas?
That's what I'm trying, that's what I heard.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much for giving us the time to look at this. Do we have any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach, I'm sorry.
So, I do appreciate the cultural and economic value this project could bring to Naco Bisbee and the county as a whole, but I am sensitive to the concerns with the existing neighbors along the perimeter of this project. I have concerns with how border-related crime will affect safety and security of the attendees within the venue. I have concerns that noise and light pollution will disturb neighboring residents as late as midnight and 2:00 AM on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday, as attendees leave the parking lot and general area. I have concerns over how the heavy streams of traffic leaving the venue may affect traffic in the area, especially emergency response vehicles. These are small roads, and it's not uncommon for emergencies to arise in large groups of, within large groups of people. So, those are, I was originally considering recommending a, an amendment to lessen the hours, further restrict hours to 8:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and even maybe adding a condition for hiring security and traffic personnel according to the demands of the event. But after hearing the, the strong opinion of the neighbors, I'm inclined to not go that route.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. You can think about that for another moment. We'll ask Mr. Taylor to summarize and recommend.
I'll just add one thing.
Sorry? Go ahead, Mr. Montgomery.
Quickly. I'm trying to see, actually, I'm not saying, I don't see how the town of Naco would be harmed by denying this project, but they could well be harmed by approving it with the items suggested by Mr. Limbach. Traffic, noise, lighting, what other behaviors might come with late-night parties, et cetera. So, it is a peaceful little place. I understand that people there would like to keep it that way. I'm just saying, I do understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Taylor, your turn?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the requested special use authorization would allow a music pavilion with ballroom, kitchen, and bar at the site of the former Torquays Valley Golf and RV Park Lounge and Restaurant. Just to reiterate, the factors in favor and against, the project fully complies with six special use authorization criteria, and the proposed redevelopment of the site is a potentially beneficial infill project that adaptively reuses an unused or underutilized property. Factors against would be partial compliance with the inaugural area plan and zoning district purpose, as well as the potential off-site impacts from noise, light, and increased traffic. With that, staff is recommending approval of Docket SU-23-25. If the condition, if the commission wishes to grant approval, staff would recommend the following conditions. The first three are the standard conditions that we would apply to special uses relative to pulling permits within a 12-month period. Also, maintaining compliance with all local, federal, and state regulations and laws, as well as any significant modification to the approved special use authorization would require revisiting by the commission. In addition to that, two stipulations would also be a 15-foot landscape buffer along Newell Street in front of the project area, and that outdoor music shall end no later than 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, midnight Friday and Saturday, and 8:00 PM on Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I would like to call for the motion now, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Maratsky.
I'm going to approve Docket SU-23-25 with condition of approval as recommended by staff. Back in favor of approval, constitute finding this fact.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Limbach, thank you. This is time for discussion of that motion, if there's anything further, before we move to the vote. Mr. Limbach, any amendments to this motion?
Uh, no, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I now call for the vote. Mr. Montgomery?
I'm going to have to vote no on this, given the sovereignty and the noise for the neighborhood.
Mr. Limbach?
I know as well for the, the issues that I've identified already.
And Mr. Young?
I have to vote no, particularly because of the, the traffic concern, the emergency help getting to the neighbors, or something that would happen at the venue.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Maratsky?
Negative. Thanks for the, because of traffic and noise.
Yes, sir, and for all the stated reasons, the chair also votes no. I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, your motion has been denied. If you disagree with this action, you have the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or online. Thank you very much.
Will? Is there a last one, wasn't there?
I now call for the Planning Director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, next month with the tabled item, you have three special use permits for December the 13th. The calendar for next year has been posted on the county's webpage. It's, will continue to be the second Wednesday of each month, except for March, there is a shift. A week sooner.
The chair mentioned, we did change the zoning regulations, how they are presented on the website. They're now on Unicode, and the chair requested that, I, I kind of showcased that to you guys. So, if you guys have a minute, I'll pull it up on my screen. Okay. So, this is on the homepage of our website, and what you're going to see is the zoning regulations, as well as the subdivision regulations, floodplain regulations, bylaws of board, fees, the fee schedule is also there, so it's all there online. What you will notice is in our staff reports, there's different section references. Now, everything referencing zoning will start with a two. But it is, once you get used to it, easy to kind of click around and search for things both by name or, or number reference. And that is online for you and, and everybody else. And we do have, what Dan's showing right now is a table, which we did not have before, but is pretty useful. So, if you look by zoning district on the top, on the left are permitted or special uses. So, it's a really quick reference guide.
And you could search, search in the search box, just cut and paste that number that they've referenced in their presentations. It's pretty handy. Okay? Any questions about that?
Only after we leave.
Yeah, later. Are there any questions or comments from the commission, for the good of the commission? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.